Meeting of the LSU Board of Supervisors will now come to order. Ms. Marilyn, please call roles.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Ms. Arrington?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Mallot?
Here.
Ms. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Mrs. Zuschlov?
Here.
Madam Chair, there is fourteen present with the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Marilyn.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, I have been over here.
Today's invocation will be given by Zach Crier, a junior 4-H student at Benton High School in Bossier Parish. And then we'll have the pledge given by Morgan Moe, a senior 4-H student at Kaplan High School in Vermillion Parish.
Please bow your head. Oh, sorry. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for allowing us to come here to meet today, dear God. I pray for the Board of Supervisors today that they may have a fruitful and productive session, dear God. Please put your healing hands on any of those who are sick or suffering, dear God, so that they may know your grace. And dear God, please, and everyone we meet and everything that we do, dear God, please allow your love to shine through us. And as Heavenly Know, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Morgan and Zach. Ms. Marilyn, has anyone registered for public comment?
No, ma'am.
With no one registered for public comment, I move that we recess for committee meetings. Is there any objection? With that objection, the board meeting is in recess. Supervisor Warner, please convene the Research and Agricultural Extension Committee. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the role?
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Morrow? Mr. Arminter?
I'm sorry, here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Morris? Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Madam Chair, there is a call.
Thank you. I'd like to invite our interim Vice President for Agriculture and Dean of the College of Agriculture, Matt Lee, to introduce the 4-H students who are going to speak with us and share their experience.
Thank you Supervisor Warner. Good morning, everyone. Good afternoon, everybody. 4-H is the largest youth organization in the world with six million youth members, supported by 500,000 volunteers. In Louisiana, 4-H is the largest youth development program and has clubs and groups in all sixty-four of our parishes, which reach 126,000 young people. 4-H provides opportunities from youth from all backgrounds and interest areas to become a member and to learn to grow through hands-on experiences. Youth gain life skills such as communication skills, leadership skills, citizenship, decision-making, interpersonal relations, and community and global awareness. The 4-H motto is to make the best better and the slogan is to learn by doing. Today, we have two of our outstanding student leaders with us, and I will introduce each of them a little bit and then let them make some remarks. Morgan Moe is currently the Louisiana 4-H Executive Board President. She's a senior at Kaplan High School in Vermillion Parish. She's grown up through the 4-H program raising and showing livestock. She has served on the Louisiana Executive Board for two years and as the Southwest Region Representative and now as State President. Morgan attributes 4-H for allowing her to develop lifelong skills, experiences, and friendships. Zach Crier is the Louisiana 4-H Executive Board First Vice President. He's a sixteen-year-old junior at Benton High School in Bossier Parish. He currently serves as the Louisiana 4-H Vice President and in the past, he served as a Northwest Louisiana Regional Representative on the Executive Board, 4-H National Conference Ambassador, Louisiana 4-H Wetlands Ambassador, and the SET Board Member. With that, I will turn it over to Morgan and Zach and let them tell you a little bit about their experiences.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. So as Dr. Lee said, I'm Morgan Moe and I'm a senior at Kaplan High School. My 4-H career began in fourth grade when I joined 4-H just to show swine. However, little did I know that 4-H would soon impact me into the person I am today. In seventh grade, I switched from swine to cattle. Showing and raising livestock in 4-H has developed me into the person I am as well as allowed me to realize that I have a love for animals that I cannot live without. With that being said, 4-H has allowed me to see that I want to be a veterinarian in the future. Besides just showing and raising livestock, I am also very active in the leadership part of 4-H. I joined our Vermillion Junior Leader Program in eighth grade and fell in love with the idea of leading and serving others. I knew after two years on Vermillion Junior Leader Parish team that I wanted to serve at a larger capacity. Later running for a 2021 Southwest Regional Representative and now standing as your state 4-H president. 4-H has allowed me to develop into the person I am by gaining a lot of life skills that'll help in the future as well as meeting people that I can now call my best friends. 4-H is a home away from home. I would encourage any parent to let their child join 4-H because to this day, I will never be able to thank my parents enough for allowing me to be a part of this amazing organization. Thank you all.
Never would I have been able to imagine, when I was just starting out 4-H in the fourth grade, that through 4-H I would be able to tour Washington DC, eat dinner at the Governor's Mansion, and walk the field at Tiger Stadium right before their game. And to think, it all started out when I decided to sign up for shooting sports in elementary school. Now, I started out shooting the 22 rifle, but then I moved on to other disciplines such as archery, hunting skills, and eventually CO2 air rifle in the eighth grade. Now, entering high school, I really wanted to switch it up so I, and I was finally eligible to run for state boards and leadership positions. I was elected to the SET Board and the Wetlands Ambassador's Team and from that point forward, I knew that I wanted to make leadership my main project area. Now, after I completed my term on those two boards and the Wetlands Ambassador Team, I decided to run for Regional Representative on the Executive Board and I was successful. And for my very first Exec Board meeting, I knew that that's what I wanted my home to be for the rest of my high school career. It was just, it felt like home. We became a family and I knew, and it's taught me so much so far and I'm really very fortunate to be able to represent the Executive Board now as Vice President. 4-H has taught me to be as involved as I can at everything, to serve with passion, and to lead by example. Through being a Louisiana 4-H officer, I've had so many opportunities to explore LSU, walk around the campus, meet so many people, and every time that I come back, it really teaches me that I believe that this is where I want to be for my next four years going into college. And overall, at the end of the day, 4-H has taught me so much and it's given me so much and I really only have two words to say, and that's thank you.
Morgan and Zach, would y'all come back to the microphone together, please? Do y'all mind? Does anyone have any questions for these two fine young people?
I'm kind of short.
Morgan, I want to know, where would you like to go to bed school?
I want to come here. Yes, ma'am.
That's great. That's the answer I was hoping for. And then, and then what kind of practice would you like, since you raise cattle?
So, I'm thinking big animals, but at the same time, I've been thinking about physical therapy too. So, I'm kind of up in the air. I just know that it, I want to deal with large livestock, so.
Fantastic. One more question. What's been your favorite experience throughout your entire years in 4-H?
I think that my favorite experience was attending the Congress trip in Atlanta, Georgia. So, this trip is won by either record books or placing at 4HU. And at this trip, we took, it's about twenty to thirty Louisiana people get to win this trip. And we get to see people from all across the world and different states and see how they do 4-H. So, I think that was definitely my favorite accomplishment so far because I could see how strong of a program we have here in Louisiana.
Great answers. Zach, what about you?
Without a doubt, my favorite 4-H experience by far was 4-H National Conference in Washington DC just because, like Morgan said, it was, it was like that, but it was a lot. We had, I believe, over three hundred and fifty 4-Hers from around the nation and that was from almost all fifty states and from Puerto Rico and the Mariana Islands. And we got to tour Washington DC, look at all the monuments, and we were also able to talk to the United States Secretary of Agriculture and cabinet member, other cabinet members, and members from Congress, and it was just really an amazing experience.
Well, thank you both. You are shining examples of not just 4-H, but our outstanding Louisiana high school students. And I'm so proud of the 4-H program and the leaders that we grow. And I love the fact that, you know, LSU, Mr. President, as we say often, LSU starts as young as the fourth grade in our impact in these children's lives. So, thank you so much for your representation. Y'all are doing a fantastic job and thank you for taking your time to be here today with us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all for having us.
Is there any other business for the committee?
Let me, I have one question. Okay, about 4-H. I'm one of nine children from a little town, Arnville, and every one of my siblings, including myself, were in 4-H from the fourth grade on. And eight out of nine of us were state officers in the 4-H and it was really something that I think that all students from the fourth grade on should get involved in. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no objection, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Research and Ag Committee. Second?
Thank you.
Thank you. No objection. Committee's adjourned. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Supervisor Warner and thank you to our impressive 4-H leaders. Supervisor Shaw, please convene the Academic Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the role?
Mr. Brown? Ms. Shaw? Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Mr. Mallot?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Warner? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Madam Chair, there is a call.
Thank you very much. Provost Haggerty, will you please present the items?
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M to award a posthumous degree to Ms. Allison Nicole Rice. At the time of her tragic passing, Ms. Rice served as the Vice President of Human Resources for Pi Sigma Epsilon, a national and professional co-ed business fraternity. She was enrolled as a full-time student for Fall 2022 Semester and held LSU and cumulative grade point averages over 3.0. With the evidence of Ms. Rice's academic success and active engagement, the faculty and Chair of the Marketing Department, the Dean of the EJ Uso College of Business, and the Administration of Louisiana State University request that Ms. Allison Nicole Rice be awarded the Bachelor of Science in Marketing Posthumously, having no doubt that she would have completed all program requirements in good standing. By awarding this degree, the university acknowledges Ms. Rice's academic achievements and provides her family with a symbol of appreciation of her talents and the life she shared with us. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Thank you, Provost Haggerty.
Chairman, Madam Chair, do you need a motion to adopt?
A second.
I move that we adopt the recommendation. Provost?
Any objection? Seeing none, the motion is adopted. Provost, will you please proceed with the next item?
Thank you very much, Supervisors, for that. The next request is from LSU A&amp;M to establish the Institute for Energy Innovation. The Institute for Energy Innovation will serve as the collaborative platform for research, technology transfer and commercialization, talent development, policy, economic, social, and environmental justice analysis in energy innovation, transition and resilience, transition to a carbon-free future. Louisiana is a historical leader in energy production and energy will remain a pillar of the state's economic portfolio. To stay at the forefront of our nation and state's climate initiatives, Louisiana must have a vehicle of innovation where industry and research meet to solve these highly relevant milestones in energy conservation and sustainability. Therefore, LSU seeks to create a cross-industry collaborative translational research institute to innovate for our most critical industries. The Institute for Energy Innovation will be overseen by Dr. William F. Tate IV, LSU President, and led by an executive director who will supervise three professional-in-residence direct reports who will oversee a respective focus area each. Shell has invested $25 million to help LSU establish the institute. Expected costs over the next five years do not exceed expected revenues. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Will you please present the X item?
LSU A&amp;M seeks conditional approval of the Center for Economics, Business, and Policy Research, CEBPR. In a strategic effort to build and expand the scope of the college's applied research efforts, the proposed center will broaden its research focus to include a range of economic, business, and public affairs topics and concerns. The newly created center will build upon the research historically conducted by three units within the EJ Uso College of Business. These are the LSU Economics and Policy Research Group, the Public Administration Institute, and the Real Estate Research Institute. Research conducted by this unit in the proposed, the proposed center have helped the state of Louisiana evaluate the economic impact of the BP oil spill, the impact of coastal erosion, oil and gas revenues for GOMESA, the economic impact of numerous large-scale industrial development projects, statewide housing needs, and economic impact of changes in state healthcare policy. The proposed center has the potential to advance all areas of the university's scholarship-first agenda. In the past five years, the units within the proposed CEBPR have acquired a total of $4 million in state and private grants. With the establishment of this center, the College of Business expects to see substantial growth in funding. In addition to already contracted work for the following years, CEBPR has projected average revenue of $616,000 per year in the form of grants and contracts from state and private entities, including LDH, LED, LWC, and the Louisiana Health Insurance Survey. Expected costs over the next five years do not exceed expected revenues. The CEBPR will be directed by Dec Tarral, Professor of Economics. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objection? The motion is approved. Would you please proceed to the next item?
Thank you. The next request is from LSU A&amp;M for continued authorization and initial designation as a Center of Research Excellence for the Social Research and Evaluation Center, SREC, housed in the College of Human Sciences and Education. The director is Dr. Judith Rhodes. Although the SREC has been in existence since 1993, it became a BOR-designated center in 2017. In the past five years, SREC has grown into a center with statewide impact and in fact, impact well beyond Louisiana, indicating the necessity to move forward with a Center of Research Excellence. This prestigious designation will elevate the center's status to increased grant funding from state and federal agencies and to become a recognized leader in social research and evaluation. The mission of the SREC is to advance social initiatives for individuals, families, and their communities through research, evaluation, professional services, and partnerships. In pursuit of this mission, SREC undertakes work in the four broad domains of education, public, safety, health, and community. Over its history, the SREC has acquired over $100 million in grants and contracts. And since SREC became a Board of Regents-designated center in 2017, it has acquired over $11 million in external funding. Federal grants and contracts routinely come from the US Department of Education, the Administration of Children and Families, the US Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, and several others. State grants and contracts routinely come from the Louisiana Department of Education, the Louisiana Department of Health, the Office of Behavioral Health, Louisiana Department of Children and Family Services, the Louisiana Department of Public Safety and Corrections, and the Governor's Office of Community Programs, and several others. Simply stated, the SREC is a pivotal resource for local and state research and evaluation. Projected grants and contracts will cover expenses. These projections are estimated by a prior year funding with a roughly seven percent increase in revenue to account for the expansion of the grant contract work each year. Thank you for your consideration.
Are there any questions on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. There are several routine business items that include a request from LSU Alexandria to name the Betty Fay Welland Lipsy and Joseph Lipsy Jr. Gallery, a request from LSU A&amp;M to terminate the graduate certificate in workforce development, a request from LSU Health and Science Center, New Orleans, to establish the Class of 1973 Superior Graduate Scholarship, a request from the LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans, to establish the Jesse and Kim E. Roberts, M.D., Endowed Superior Graduate Student Scholarship, a request from LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans, to establish the Kelsey Bradley Fabro Family Chair in Pediatric Neuro-oncology, and a request from LSU Health and Science Center, Shreveport, to name the Dean Andrew L. Chessen Jr., M.D., Neurology Residence and Fellow's Education Room. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. I'd like to thank you all today for considering the posthumous degree of Allison Rice. It means a lot to me personally and to the student body as a whole. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the committee.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Then the committee is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you so much Supervisor Shaw. Supervisor Morrow, please convene the Finance Committee.
Ms. Marilyn, please call a role.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Ms. Arrington?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Zuschlov?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there is a call.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, would you present the invitations, please?
Yes, Mr. Morrow, I will. Thank you. Ms. Marilyn? Who's operating the, or point? Good afternoon, Supervisors. We're going to pick up with the approval of the operating budget for the 23-24 year. You will recall, I started during the last meeting discussing the priorities for this year, for this next upcoming year. We are at the point in the budget cycle where we are presenting the budget to the Board of Regents, at least our needs and our wish list, I'd like to call it. The Board of Regents voted on their budget this week and the next step in the process is for the Board of Regents and the higher ed systems to go before the Division of Administration in the crafting of the Governor's Executive Budget, which will then be presented to the Legislature in early 2023, late January, early February. And then that will go through the legislative process. Next slide. To go through the academic and research priorities that have been identified by the President for the LSU system, the first priorities relate to what the President has been calling and referring to as the Pentagon, Scholarship First Pentagon, as well as STEM initiatives around the system. The total ask across the system was $18.4 million. This would allow for continued investment in those five focus areas of the Pentagon as well as STEM initiatives at campuses around the system. That request was submitted to the Board of Regents. The President and I presented that to the Board of Regents in late September and there are parts of our request included in the Board of Regents budget. Ms. Warner was present for that presentation. In addition to the Scholarship First request, we also made a request for salary competitiveness. That includes faculty and staff salary increases, which will allow us to continue to provide pay raises to our faculty and our staff. Our goal is to achieve SREB salary competitiveness. Knowing that our faculty and staff did not receive pay raises for a number of years, we need to maintain the ability to offer those pay raises. The ask for that is $15.5 million. This is again, across the system. The NCI designation is continuing forward. The request is $16 million. The Regents budget that was approved this week includes a $16 million request for the NCI designation. This is to allow for recruitment of researchers to our facilities to conduct research that will hopefully get will hopefully get us closer to that NCI designation, but it also is for technology upgrades necessary to do the research. In addition to the NCI piece, we want to maintain and enhance our research and our statewide extension presence through our Ag Center. We just heard from the start of the 4H experience, but continuing that statewide extension presence as well as the research that takes place in Ag requires an investment. The ask is $15.7 million, and we believe that Ag is a part of our future always, so we made sure that we made a specific ask for the Ag Center that is separate and apart from the $18.4 million that is in the Pentagon. In addition, graduate education and research are critical to the future of LSU. Providing livable stipends for our graduate students and attracting PhD students to LSU are very important. Being able to provide those stipends requires an investment. We've made an ask for funding to provide a livable stipend to PhD students and to invest in their research. That request is $25 million. Other additional funding priorities include, of course, the mandated costs that are always a part of our budget request, staffing solutions, which I talked some about last month, but ensuring that we are competitive with our peer institutions, but also competitive with private industry and attracting the best and brightest to work at all of our campuses, and also providing livable wages to all of our employees at all of our campuses. And more importantly, combating some of the issues we have from the Great Resignation, providing opportunities for employees to work in, in areas that they can move up in pay without necessarily having to assume supervisory roles. So those are some of the solutions we're looking to offer with those staffing solutions. Facilities ask are included, both deferred maintenance at a lot of our campuses as well as some new projects for Shreveport, UNIS, and Alexandria are included, information technology upgrades, both the Student Information System project that is underway with an $18.4 million ask for this year, our investment in the creation of a Security Operations Center. That Security Operations Center is part of both our cybersecurity for the campus, but also our providing training for students in cybersecurity. We would be unique in having the first Security Operations Center operated by university students. We are continuing that discussion. This would be a unique experience in that LSU would maintain the SOC, it would be run on the Lonnie network. Not only would LSU students be trained in this Security Operations Center, but the opportunity would be available for LSU to provide training in cybersecurity operations for students at other higher ed institutions. So this is something that will either be in the Regents' budget, or it will actually be in the Governor's budget as a part of the cybersecurity initiative as a standalone item. And then we will continue to implement technology upgrades for both research and online modality, and then lastly, continued investments in our Title IX programming across the system. Those are the primary budget items. The actual dollar amounts for each item are included in your budget binders as well as in onboard as attachment one to your budget resolution. If, I will take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the proposed budget? If none, is there a motion to approve the item?
Approved.
So moved.
I didn't move the second. Are there any, is there any opposition to the motions? Hearing none, the items are adopted.
That is the only finance item. The second item that was going to be presented will be deferred until the December meeting.
Is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
I'm moved.
So moved. Now I have a second.
Second.
So moved in second. Any objection? Hearing none, the committee is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Morrow. Supervisor Aronson, please convene the Property and Facilities Committee.
Thank you Supervisor Jones. Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aronson? Here. Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Damp?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mrs. Zuchaud?
Here.
Madam Chair, there's a form.
Ms. Lewis, would you please present the item?
Yes ma'am. Supervisors, you have before you today a recommendation to approve the schematic design and authorize the President to execute a lease with the Tiger Athletic Foundation for the renovation and expansion of the Football Operations Building for the construction of the new recovery and rehabilitation suite. This is a part of the LSU and Our Lady of the Lake Health Championship Health Partnership investment. We are moving forward with the Football Operations Recovery Suite design. This work was contemplated to allow for the clinic for our student athletes within the Football Operations Facility. Present today is both Tiger Athletics to talk about as well as the architect with any questions. As the slides are going through, it shows what the new facility will look like. I will just tell you a little bit about the partnership between LSU Athletics and Our Lady of the Lake. You will recall that Our Lady of the Lake made an investment in LSU of $160 million earlier this year. Part of that investment includes a partnership with LSU Student Health and Athletic Health. The Athletic Health piece includes clinical treatment of all of our LSU athletes in this new facility. In order to accommodate that, renovations needed to be made that allow for expanded facilities that you see here, that include new medical spaces, new rehabilitation facilities, all types of therapies that are open to all students, as well as moving some office space within the existing facility. So it's two levels of design, they're moving the practice fields, and a new entrance. This will be funded by Tiger Athletic Foundation. The total cost is $20 million. Work will start in December until the spring and then pick up again next fall. It's anticipated to require two years to complete, but once completed, we will have state-of-the-art healthcare for all student athletes that attend LSU. And the architects as well as athletics are here if there are any additional questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lewis or for the architects or anyone from Athletics?
The, the, the lease. Is LSU responsible for any of the money? Is just, just about, just TAF?
This is all being funded by TAF. LSU is not responsible.
Straightly, straight lease that we're giving?
Straight lease to TAF for the construction. TAF is doing the construction. They are paying for it.
You are not obligated?
We are not obligated.
Okay.
I make a motion? A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Any objection? Committee is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Aronson. Supervisor Temple, please convene the Athletics Committee.
Thank you Madam Chair. Today we only have one item, but before we get to it, Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Temple?
Here.
Mrs. Zuchlaub?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Mr. Damp?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Madam Chair, there's a form.
Thank you Ms. Marilyn. Members, we only have one item that we want to have addressed today, and that item will be covering Mrs. Scott Woodward, Athletic Director, and at this time I'd like our council to go see on it.
Board members, what you have before you is a proposed contract extension for Athletics Director Scott Woodward. The current contract is scheduled to end April 30, 2025. The proposed extension will take him through April 30, 2029. In the proposed extension, there's a modest base salary increase, but there's a complex structure of academic performance incentives. There's three categories of academic performance incentives based on departmental academic progress rate, departmental academic progress rate ranked in the SEC, and a third one based on graduation rate. There are two one-time athletics incentives which are based on certain goals reached by all teams. The numbers are in your contract, but the base salary will be about $1.85 million for the duration. It will not escalate. Are there any questions?
I make a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zuchlaub and seconded by Ms. Aronson. Any opposition? None? Get a roll call? Approval? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the eyes have been sore. Any other questions or comment? If not, this particular committee closes at this time.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Assistant.
Thank you Supervisor Temple. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene the board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any objection? Without objection, the meeting will now come to order. Ms. Marilyn, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Mr. Brown? Mr. Damp?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Zuchlaub?
Here.
Madam Chair, there's a form.
Thank you Ms. Marilyn. For our approval are the minutes of the board meeting held on September 8th and 9th. These minutes were previously provided. Does anyone have any corrections? Hearing no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. At this time, I'll recognize LSU A. Chancellor Paul Correll to share a few updates.
Thank you very much. This past week, or late last week, we had the grand opening of our U Drainage and Infrastructure Project that we've been talking about for many years, and with your support and the support of the Legislature and the Governor, it is a reality. We have a beautiful plaza now in, in the main part of the, traveling through the campus, through two U circle drives that are really making entrance to the campus much more efficient and modern, and a lot of the money's underground. This is a drainage project too, and we have a major improvement in our drainage. I think some of you have seen the pictures of the students walking in water in the campus, and we've had, you won't believe this, we had a drought, but we did have some heavy rains before the drought came, and the drainage is significantly improved. We have no water accumulating, so I want to really thank you all for that. And the only other thing I would mention is we're really celebrating, in fact, we're going to have a celebration of them at first. Out of all the four-year institutions in Louisiana, we had the highest percentage increase in enrollment, fall to fall, at over 11%. And we're very, very proud of that, and this is because of the hard work of the family and the team we have at LSU A. And I mean, it's really unprecedented. Only three institutions saw enrollments grow, and most of those were, you know, in the lower digits, but to have an 11% plus, it's amazing to me, I can tell you that, so I just wanted to give you that information, and I really appreciate the opportunity to share. Thank you.
Thank you Chancellor, and congratulations on the enrollment growth. That's spectacular. I will wish you well as you continue to drive toward increased enrollment. I know you've got a very aggressive goal of 5,000, and we look forward to seeing that happen in the near future, so congratulations, and congratulations on your drainage project.
Thank you.
Campus is beautiful. We look forward to everybody getting to experience it when we have our board meeting there.
We're here too.
So, congratulations, Dr. Correll.
Thank you.
For our approval today are the reports to the Board for Routine Business Items. The reports were previously provided electronically. Deputy Vice President and Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Lewis, is available if you have any questions. Anybody have any questions at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reports.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any objection? Without objection, the motion is approved. At this time, the Faculty and Staff Advisors' Report will be presented by Dr. Cam Boje.
Good afternoon. I would like to start introducing our council faculty members. We have Dr. Mandy Lopez here from LSU A&amp;M, Dr. Angela Groh from LSU UNIS, we have Dr. Kristoff Stumpf from LSU Alexandria, we have Dr. Steven Alexander from LSU Health Shreveport, Dr. Richard Woloski from Agricultural Center, LSU, and we also have an alternate member, this is Professor Tarral here, okay, there he is, from LSU A&amp;M. I would like to start informing you that Professor Richard Woloski has been re-elected as Chair of the LSU Agricultural Faculty Council for 2023, and he will also serve on the Council of Faculty Advisors for 2023. Some of the updates from LSU Shreveport, Dr. Alexander has completed his term as Senate President, and Dr. Oleg Cherish, Chernechev is the new Senate President. The faculty also had a retreat at Shreveport where they talked about faculty retention, wellness, and mental health issues. The faculty is also involved with other members in the search of the Chancellor for Medical Center at Shreveport. The new medical education building is under construction and would be finished hopefully by 2023. The faculty is also working in the development of interprofessional education and wants to have a centralized director for the campus for that region. Faculty is also looking into the cost expense benefit analysis for a childcare center over there. One of the issues which is also discussed at other campuses is the transfer of authority of tuition and fee from legislature to the boards and universities, and faculty perceives that if that can be done and legislature trusts the boards and university that they would not allow huge increases in the tuition fee and will do it only as an adaptive measure based on the growing cost and inflation. And the concern is the support to the universities from the state has dropped to around 20%. The campus also is anticipating about 2% increase in the salaries, but that still is not enough, and the salaries are below the average compared And the salaries are below the average compared to the surrounding schools. The concerns of Baton Rouge campuses, the first one is the challenges by the students who are enrolled in others' university, particularly if they are out of state, and they also want to take a course. And they are concerned about whether they'll get the credit from their university enrollment from their NYC versa if they take a course at LSU and would they get the equivalent credit to their universities. So if that can be streamlined, because at this time, it's difficult for them to understand it in the beginning. The other concern by the faculty is the moodle. The moodle is controlled by online LSU. And the faculty statement is while we are here, can we have more streamlined approach to give feedback to the moodle management? The faculty are also concerned about increased workload as some of the faculties are either resigning or retiring. And the faculty who are left have more workload because of that reason in the time of challenging time of recruitment and the concern about faculty retention. And the issue related to that is also salary inversion and compression. So the LSU faculty who has been here for a long period of time are concerned about that. And it has been given feedback by the faculty who are leaving LSU. And I apologize for having difficulties presenting the report last month. So some of the concern which was raised in last month's meeting, I want to just say them again, so please forgive me for that. One of the concern faculty has was particularly at A&amp;M was parking during the sporting events. The parking is restricted for the faculty during those sporting events. And faculty have difficulty reaching their either teaching activity or research activities. So they are requesting that they should be given permission. One of the noted thing is that the parking fees are some of the highest in the SEC. One of the other issue was taxing on the graduate students. And sometimes the graduate students stipends are compelled to pay an additional 40% to LSU. So faculty is requesting that if that can be streamlined and help for having more graduate student for research and studies. And last thing is from LSU Health New Orleans, the 15 staff members and 15 faculty members received Chancellor's Excellence Award in the September Town Hall Meeting by the Chancellor. And Dr. Janet Sutherland has started working on October 1st as a Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs. And faculty is very excited. We met with her, and it seems like we'll see a lot of good improvements there. Thank you. If you have any questions, I and other faculty members are here and will be happy to answer. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Cam Bojey. At this time, we'll move on to the President's Report.
Thank you. I'd like to apologize for my attire. We had a very lovely fundraiser this morning. Tiger Athletic Foundation President's Cup, very successful. From a financial point of view, I'm not sure if we won. As I had to leave before it was over for this meeting, so I'm waiting for the results. But it was a great opportunity to hang out with and rain's bunny with many fine LSU Tigers. On the fundraising economic development side, I'd just like to acknowledge the gifted up just made aware of. LSU A accounts for their future gift from Roy Martin and many others in that area. And they have been consistently contributing to LSU A in very positive ways and I think making a great difference in central Louisiana. Similarly, if I divide up this set of remarks, I have one on the land grant side. Many of you know, we have been taking trips to various institutions across the United States to take a look at their agriculture programs. However, each time, we end up learning far more about how other institutions do their business. And we gain more than just the ag insights. But I would like to share just a couple from the NC State trip we took. Publicly thank also the President of NC State and his staff for hosting a wonderful event where we had legislative representation, Senator Elaine, Representative McFarland, the Commissioner of Ag, Mike, Dr. Strain. We had ag business leaders. And of course, wonderful members of this Board of Supervisors group, Jones, Supervisor Jones, Chairwoman Jones, Starnes, Werner were there with us as well. Hope I didn't forget any supervisor on that. I remember three for sure. A great trip, extremely insightful because NC State in many respects tracked with LSU up until about 15 years ago. And if you follow the data very carefully, the institutions looked identical. They looked identical in terms of the student population, the research portfolio, et cetera. Today, NC State is one of the largest research portfolios without a medical center in the United States. It took about 15-year run to change that. I would say there were many things for us to learn. First of all, on the ag side, the investment in what I would call ag technology, ag biotech, plant science was significant. Quite frankly, I hadn't seen that kind of investment at an institution of a state type in really ever. The Plant Science Center was world-class. I thought I was at Stanford or MIT. I did not think I was at a state institution. It was the best I've ever seen invested in faculty. Their library was state-of-the-art. It was a digital learning commons where students not only had access to books in a robotic retrieval system, but they also had access to the finest analytics support system I've ever seen in a digital commons, GIS work, analytics, digital humanities, all available in the context of the library. It was, in my opinion, what a modern university should look like today. And I think it, for those of us who attended the trip, we caught a real vision and a new passion for working with our legislative friends as well as philanthropy. Rob Stewart was on the trip. I think we all caught a real vision on what we need to be doing for LSU if we're going to in the next decade or so aspire to that level of excellence. I do think there were some other things to learn from there. They, of course, work in the world of triangles. They call themselves the Research Triangle because of NC State, Duke, and the University of North Carolina. And in that triangle, they build out tremendous business hubs. I would like to offer for you, not using their language directly to steal it, but we do have our own triangles that offer opportunities as well. Here in Baton Rouge, if we thought about it very carefully, we do have a flagship university on the Baton Rouge campus as well as a major agricultural research center. We also have Pennington Biomedical Research Center and great partners at Our Lady of the Lake and Mary Berry Perkins. We have our own triangle here in Baton Rouge. In New Orleans, similarly, we have a major health science center. We have excellent partner in LCMC. And we also have the state's cancer center. We have a triangle in New Orleans. Similarly, we have a triangle in Shreveport with LSU S, our Health Science Center, and our partner in Asher and other business partners there. And we have something better than NC State because they're not, they call themselves a flagship, but I think that was more envy to UNC. The realities are, we have three areas of the state, Yonex and Alexandria being the central part of the state. And then we also have our New Orleans hub as well as our Shreveport hub as another form of three that I think we could leverage and be quite great at. And so there's a great opportunity for us, I believe, going forward to replicate many of the things we learned, but also to scale it in a geospatial manner that would make Louisiana very proud. Next, I survived a C-grant trip where I was on some kind of plane that probably was made in about 1960 that could land in water and the like. It was quite amazing to go to the southern part of our state. The billions of dollars that go into the port, the port there is quite impressive. What I was left with after dealing with the researchers from LSU who were in that area in the C-grant, the work they were doing was the very best I had seen in some time with respect to interdisciplinary activities. So you had engineers, oceanographers, geospatial scientists, humanists, social scientists, all working together to maintain the land, to maintain the life of the people and to secure the future. Really heroic, in my opinion, the things that I saw. And I think it's a place where we need to make sure we continue to invest in the C-grant and our coastal work as I think it is foundational to the state. I had been saying that for about 16 months. However, going to see it directly, I realized that it hangs in a balance. The nature of science and engineering is the only thing keeping us afloat. It is stark, in my opinion. And I think that the researchers who were there as well as the extension group that's there is absolutely fantastic. And I'll end that part of my presentation with saying, I've always said that the people of Louisiana are some of the toughest people I've ever been around, friendliest, but I really never understood it more so than that trip. Just unbelievable. I'd also like to acknowledge that since our last meeting, several searches have started. Chancellor Correll is leading our search for Vice President for Ag Extension and Dean of Agriculture. We have a wonderful committee, and I'm confident that we will find individuals that lead us in that direction. Also, all of the interim dean searches here in the Baton Rouge campus have been launched. Chancellor Hagerty is leading the charge on that front. And so I feel very confident that we will find great leaders there. And since our last meeting, we've had an announcement that one of our outstanding leaders, Chancellor Clark, is retiring. I think we should, and while we will have opportunity, I'm sure to celebrate his investment at LSU S. in the Shreveport. It's a wonderful time to acknowledge his outstanding service. So please join me in thanking him. There is a basic rule. You are chancellor until you are not. And your duties, of course, are to continue at scale. Chancellor Clark is leading our search for the leader of the Health Science Center in Shreveport. And I think they're making great progress in that search and will probably be having some candidates very soon. I'm not asking to speculate and talk about it. I know it's hard work under wraps there, but I really appreciate your leadership and thank you for all you've done for the university. Really an outstanding job in Shreveport, so thank you. That concludes my formal remarks. I really appreciate the opportunity to give a report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, for that excellent report. I will now entertain a motion to approve all the committee recommendations from today's committee meetings.
So move. Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. I would like to echo the President's congratulations of Chancellor Larry Clark on his retirement. I appreciate you and for your years of severance service and unwavering commitment to the staff, students, and faculty at LSU Shreveport. Thank you Chancellor Clark for your contributions and commitment to LSU S. and the community. Thank you very much. Let's give him another round of applause. During my first month as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, I've had the distinct pleasure of attending several wonderful events and tours. I attended the Boyd Professors Dinner along with my colleague, immediate past Chair Supervisor Starnes. It was an absolute honor. Our Boyd Professors conduct cutting-edge and innovative research that elevates our academic enterprise and has significant impact on local, state, national, and global communities. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to express our congratulations to our faculty honorees during this event and our continued support to our Boyd Professors. This month, I've visited our LSU Alexandria campus to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the long-awaited Drainage and Infrastructure Project. Because of the unwavering support and commitments from Governor John Bill Edwards, the Central Louisiana Legislative Delegation, our Congressional delegation, my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, President Tate and Chancellor Paul Correll, this development is complete. This transformational project is not, it not only beautifies the LSU A. campus, but enhances the quality of life and safety for our students, faculty, and staff. Yesterday, my colleagues and I had the chance to visit the Ag Centers, LSU Ag Center Food Innovation Institute's food incubator. We're excited about the major impacts they're making on the food industry, ag technology, and the resources provided to businesses. During the beginning of the pandemic, this institute helped businesses get back to manufacturing their products. I'm very excited for the future of the food incubator and the plans to continue to grow and expand their research. Last month, along with the President, as he mentioned, a few of my colleagues and I were able to visit North Carolina State where we engaged colleagues in agriculture and interdisciplinary research. It was certainly an education, and we brought back a lot of great information from that trip. Yesterday, the Board of Supervisors made a special visit to watch our Golden Band from Tigerland, which was an extra special treat. And we are totally pumped and ready to go into homecoming weekend. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, before we adjourn?
Yes, sir.
My understanding that we're supposed to have an audit committee meeting following this board meeting.
We are, sir.
I'm not sure where or when it is.
It is going to take place right here.
Well, that's easy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Any objection? Without objection, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.